For Tuesday, May 17th. Please let the record show that all city council members are present as well as members of the city staff and members of the public. I am going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have a moment of silence. As we do that, I would ask you to please remember our public safety workers as they are out protecting the residents of our city as well as those who come to visit our city. I'd also ask you to remember the heads of the countries around the world and maybe think of them and hopefully they can consider coming to some peaceful terms and some of the conflicts that are going on. And lastly, I'd ask you to keep the city council in mind as they make decisions tonight that affect the residents of our city. All right, we'll now have a time for public comment. This is an opportunity to address the city council with concerns or ideas. No action will be taken during the public comment section. We ask that you state your name and the city that you reside in. We also ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we will move on to presentations and reports. I do not have anything for the mayor's report tonight, but we will move on to number two, the city administration report from Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just going through there, I don't know if you have any questions. Department reports are all in there. If you have questions on that, we could address it now or you can talk to me later. Going through the packet on page 16, it refers to our sales tax. If you see the numbers there, we are still almost a million dollars ahead of last year if I read this correctly. So, sales taxes continue to be strong. We like to see that. On page 21, I'm just going to highlight some of the things as I go through this packet. There's things that will always jump out at me. You'll notice that on follow-through on the fire code violations, there was issued fines of a little over a thousand dollars. Again, this is one of those things that we addressed in the budgetary thing last meeting. This is just getting to the point where Randy is getting so busy because a lot of this falls on him. The fire department will go out and do those initially and then he's the one that follows through on these things. So, his workload's getting busy enough there. We're going to have to look at some options here, so we'll keep that in mind as we go forth and hopefully if we get some further funding later down the road, we can look at some of these things. And I think what happens is our code enforcement gets neglected because of these obligations on these other things. And that's one I think we need to start putting a little more emphasis on because I think we're just dropping the ball a lot of times. Not on purpose, it's just happened by the nature of the beast. So, I just point that out just so you're aware that that is something we're looking at at this point. On page 26, this is one of Rich's charts here. And the only reason I point it out because I think this is important too. The top chart I don't pay as much attention to. I mean, that's good, it's talking about, you know, the different community usages and stuff. But that bottom one, if you look at that in the open play and the pickleball both, the percentage of non-residents that are using those far exceed our own residents, which is interesting, especially in the pickleball. I mean, they drowned us in that one, but I don't know that that's a bad thing, but there comes a point sometimes when we're doing more things for other communities in the county than we are for our own citizens. And I don't think that's pushing our people out, it's just what's happening. So, a lot of usage there by non-residents. On page 31, I always like to read through Scots and I'm just going to touch up on that very first page there when it talks about patrol report. You know, for all the years that I prosecuted, I was always convinced that the only ones we caught in court that we prosecuted for criminal offenses were the guys that weren't really smart. And if you read that very first one, a customer reported that a male had returned a tool back that he had bought at Home Depot and the bag contained drug paraphernalia when he brought it back. And I just kind of scratch my head sometimes, well, what were you thinking? That this just wouldn't get noticed or what, you know? It's just kind of comical, I got to kick out that one. But the bigger one is the one further on down the page. Ag assault on our police officers. I was actually, Scott invited me over, I got to watch the video on this thing. I didn't know how you could describe that feeling if you're an officer, you get called to a house on a domestic and that's all you know when you show up. And fortunately, our guys, whether they did it on purpose, and I think it was, or they lucked out, but they happened to be behind their vehicles when this lady opened fire. And those shots were aimed at them. And that's what's scary about that is I don't think any of us can appreciate being shot at. And your life is on the line there. And poor McNally, two weekends in a row had experiences like this and it's just, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't ever want to be in their position, quite frankly, but really sad ending to that too. The person ended up passed away, but at least our guys weren't injured and they were able to get out of there. But that video, when you watch that, it just, it gives you almost a sick feeling in your stomach when you're watching that and just thinking what those guys are going through. So again, my hat's off for them. They did everything textbook again, just perfectly how they needed to. I think that's part of the reason why they are alive and then a little bit of luck in there too because some of those things you can't prevent, so. By way of our employee recognitions, we just happen to have our old man here tonight so we can thank him individually, but Mr. Douglas passes 31 years with us, so. I think Sean will be retiring real soon. I keep harassing the crap out of him and bringing him stuff and he just shakes his head like, what are you thinking? But we'll try and keep him on board as long as we can. He's wonderful to work with and we tease him, but he certainly can dish it back, so we're grateful for Sean. That's a long time if you think about that, it is to me. I can't even imagine staying at a job for 31 years. 16 years for Abe under Sean's same department and Travis 11 and dropped down Luigi with six, so congrats to them. And then we had a couple firefighters that I passed that out to Matt and he'll pass that on to those guys as well. Staffing authorization, we again remain under, almost six under. And again, this can be interpreted in different ways, but we are certainly below what we have been for a while, so we expressed a lot of that to you last week or last meeting and we'll continue to work on those things. But other than that, I think that part looks good. Mike, did you want to add anything on the community development? His report is on page 20 that will fill you in on quite a bit of that unless there's something in particular you wanted to. A lot of things still continue, it's going crazy, I mean, just crazy. And some of the adjustments we've made just recently is added to all of those, but nothing's really fallen away. I mean, it still continues and it's looking good on a lot of these things. It's going to get really busy and some of those we'll bring up tonight later in that meeting and Riverdale continues to go. Any questions on any of that? Thank you.
Counselor Stevens.
Yeah. No, I don't think we put that up. Yeah, yeah.
Because you have to have to log in.
Right.
Okay. Just curious.
There were a number of videos. I mean, and this is where it gives you a perspective, you're getting it from different cars, even neighbors. I mean, it was like a movie almost. You could see all this stuff, there's some kids coming down the road, you see them taking off running. It was just a crazy scene, just crazy. And that's why it's so hard to, you're trying to control the situation and you got side things that are going on, you got people running around, you're trying to protect and then all of a sudden somebody starts shooting and bullets are flying all over the place. I mean, it's intense, real intense, so. Not something we want to be there for. We're grateful for them and glad they do it, so.
Counselor Hilton.
I know that's a public record and so freedom of information, if we wanted to see it, we probably could, but my question is probably the council would really benefit from seeing that. Is that something you would consider, Mr. Brooks?
We'll talk about it. I'll sit down with chief and see where we're at. I mean, it might even be something we could use in training at some point in time, but still fairly fresh, we want to be sensitive to the family and things like that, so it wouldn't be for a while, but maybe at some point in time we could look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We'll now move on to consent items. We have one, consideration to approve, meeting minutes from the May 3rd council work session and the May 3rd council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to these minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll now move on to our action items. The first one, number one, is a discussion regarding agricultural zoning issues. Mr. Brooks and Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, Mayor. I might turn some time over to Counselor Merrill just to address a potential conflict there, just so she can make her disclosure under state code.
So, I just wanted to disclose that I could potentially benefit from this decision of any one zoning, so just wanted to be sure that I disclosed that.
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Mike, if I, because based upon what we talked about before this meeting, I just wanted to make a statement and you can take it for what it's worth, but and I'll speak as the city attorney now as I represent the city. This puts us in a really uncomfortable position as.
Can I make a motion? Is that, or no?
Well, my comments might add to that if it's worth your while, but if you just, if you're concerned about that and you want to make a motion, if it's what I'm thinking it's going to be, that's where I was going with it, so.
Are you okay to hear the comments or do you want to make the motion right now?
Yeah, I'm okay to hear the comments.
What I would state is, as an officer of the court, as my position as an attorney, it's my obligation to make sure that people's rights are protected. Where we have a pending action at this point, I really don't want to discuss this matter right now, whether it's the city or whether it's Carina, because I don't want anybody making a statement that could in any way affect or hurt their particular case in court. And so, I think the timing of this is bad. I would certainly welcome a continuance on this for that reason, if nothing else, and we can address the issues later. But that's just all I wanted to say in that regard. I think it's important that we're aware of that and we don't want to jeopardize anybody's rights in that regard.
Okay.
I just, I wanted to make a motion to see if we could table the discussion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Counselor Stevens?
Yes, I mean, everything you're talking about as to why we shouldn't was well-known before, two weeks ago when this was brought up, our last council meeting. I find the packet particularly insightful as far as the, especially on the topics of the easement and the restrictions, potential restrictions that are put there. And so, to have a discussion for educational purposes so you know what you're looking at because it is a lot of information, I would like to have a discussion and you can table it at some, any point along the way. But again, why you would bring it up and table it is just furthering the drama of the whole thing. But anyway, that's just me. I'm not going to support it, table it.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we have another comment?
So, one of the things about having a discussion is having a balance of both sides to understand the issue. It's not just because you want to drive home your point, it's about coming up with the best things for Riverdale. One of the things that we need to do honestly for Riverdale is some of these things, and Mr. Eggit, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but how old is the A1 zoning? You know, and we're talking about some of these things that really doesn't affect Riverdale as much anymore. Having the ability to discuss things intelligently on both sides of the thing, which it's already been mentioned that some of these things were brought up and are new. So, it'd be good to have a balanced discussion so we can make, you know, the positive decisions for Riverdale. Time is nothing but time. I mean, if the pending action is, I mean, that was something that we didn't even know before a few minutes ago. I mean, some people are chiming in on Zoom to watch court cases and other people aren't. You know, I think it's important to have a balanced discussion, so I mean, if, I mean, obviously I support it because I seconded the motion, but I mean, we just need to have both sides equally represented.
Okay, we have a motion and, okay, one more comment?
I don't know what both sides are talking about. It's, this is an educational process and I'm not so sure that there is a for and against. It's a process of understanding and knowing and learning. So, when you say both sides, that doesn't make sense, but anyway.
And I think maybe to Mr. Brooks' comment, the timing might just not be great.
But it was well-known before.
Yeah, well, anyway, we have a motion and a second to table this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have four in favor and one opposed, so the motion carries. And Ms. Mayor, going, you're okay with who was for and against? We did discuss that at our meeting sewer board last night. Those results are supposed to be in a table, I guess, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And also that disclosure has to go into minutes as well, make sure you make record of that.
Yeah, and all votes are supposed to be in the table with each person noted yes, no, or absent, if they're absent also, is what the attorney there said, so. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number two. Consideration of Resolution 2022-14, adopting drought rates for culinary water usage. Mr. Douglas, the old man, as Mr. Brooks calls him.
Thank you, Mayor. You don't have to listen to him all the time with some of the legal stuff, so. Like I said, we had it in the last packet, just looking for some guidance. We really want to keep that fund whole, you know, I just hate to see it go in the hole. We need to be doing projects, we need to be doing, putting infrastructure back in the ground. At the same time, we can't sell water and we don't want people to use water, so it's kind of like, I don't know, we've never been in this situation before, you know? We've never had drought rates, we've never needed to do it. And we're hoping it's a short term, like I said earlier, we'd like to just do it from July 1 till October, end of October, till the water season's over and then we're going to have to look at it and see what it really does. We don't know how it's going to work. I mean, and most of the cities around us that are doing it, they don't really know either. I've spoke to quite a few, I know Cody spoke to a lot. It's new to a lot of people, so we'll have to see how it works, but we can either proceed with it as presented or if you have ideas or comments, we could look at something different as well, too.
Counselor Hilton?
Is this going to show on the bill as the rate or is it going to show as a surcharge?
It will show as the rate when it's, during them times.
Do you have the ability to show the surcharge?
Yes, we should, we should be able to.
I don't know if we can with the current bill. We could probably put something in the, there's that note section, we could put a note in there that said something that this is due to drought rates, our billing.
It'd be the same buzz as two prices.
Right.
So, you're asking if we could put both prices in the bill? No, I don't think we could do that. That's what, but we are proposing to send out a separate postcard during June explaining what we're doing there and.
Counselor Arnold.
Maybe we could put a little blurb in the newsletter, in the notes on the bill, we could say, see newsletter and keep a little block or something, so people when they get their bill, they can look at for the block and actually.
We've even talked about, we don't know for sure yet, but we're going to try and put a QR code, correct, on there?
Oh, good.
That you could just scan that. If we can make it work, we're still going through that with the print company and everything, but if we could print that on the little notification card, you would be able to scan and go to a direct link.
That's a great idea.
On our website. And our hope is that'll work because I think that's the best way to get somebody to link really quick to the information they need because the card's going to be really small.
Can we add it there too, that if you do come up with QR code and put it on the website?
We will, we will have it on the website, we'll have it on Facebook, we plan on having it in the newsletter and we plan on doing, if we can make it all work through the print, we plan on having that extra card out or a mailer of some kind during June.
Counselor Hanson.
And, but somewhere on the bill, it will notify people that drought rates apply during that time period.
Yeah, we can do that. In the box.
Right. Right.
So, I had a couple of questions. So, this is, the drought rate will be set at a certain point, I'm assuming, and it will be the same through the whole period, or will it go up and down month to month?
So, unless, so we're going to, it's based off of what Weber Basin puts out, what drought rate or what drought we are in as far as their classifications? If you look, we color-coded, we matched everything so that it's clear.
Yeah.
I don't see them making a mid, I look back through like the last three or four years to see if I seen any changes during the summer. It didn't look like it really changed, if anything, it went up, but I would assume we're going to start in this one and stay in it through October. Though, the reservoir levels like for the last, probably the last seven to nine days, pretty much all the reservoirs on Weber Basin system are still climbing as far as, you know, getting better percentage-wise, except for Willard Bay and it's been stagnant for, I think since last Monday. It hasn't went up or went down, so it's pretty stagnant. The rest of them have all been climbing a percent every other day or something like that, so gradually coming up and looking at them based on where they was at last year. Some of them are actually exceeding last year. So, I'm really interested to see what Weber Basin does at the next meeting.
And that's when they'll pick the level like we are at, you know, severe or extreme?
I don't think they'll change that, but I think there's a chance that they might talk about the water days per week and how much water we can use that way, so I'm looking forward to that on, I think it's the last Thursday in May.
And right now, we're at severe, not the red, but we're at the orange.
Right.
Okay. Counselor Hilton?
Okay, a couple of questions. First, does this include, this new proposal, does it include the tiering that we've talked about?
Yes.
Based on usage?
Yep.
Okay, and second question, do you happen to know why there, the water level of the river is higher than you would expect given the drought?
So, right now, what you're seeing in the river is a lot of the mid-level and also the snow that's coming off below the reservoirs. So, anything that comes off on that side below East Canyon, there's no catch for it. And anything below Echo and Lost Creek on the other side, any of that snow melt that's in a drainage that comes off below that, they have no way to catch that. So, most of the runoff you're seeing right now, I mean, if you watch what the reservoirs are doing, they're not there. I actually drove by Echo this weekend and it's almost up to where they could touch the spillway, you know, like it couldn't spill yet even if they wanted to, but it's almost there. But I think all the water you're seeing in the rivers, that is the water that's below anywhere, anywhere that they can catch it. Because they're trying to catch everything that they, they also, there's legalities on which water they can catch and how much they can hold. As far as I'm aware and talking to them last week, they're catching everything they can possibly catch.
That might be another thing to consider in the newsletter because I, it's crazy how many people ask me that.
Is why the river's high?
Yeah. Why are we wasting so much water down the river?
Yeah, and the other thing is you have to remember, they use some of that water, so if they are letting some down, a lot of that, they pick up Willard out of down by 17th Street. And so, even when the water's high here, if you go below 17th, a lot of times the water drops dramatically there depending on how much they're diverting to Willard. And the Willard Canal's been half to three-quarters full for the last two to three weeks, so.
Counselor Hanson, did you have a question? No?
Just enjoying the conversation.
Yeah, I know you were big into water and so, so we should have assigned you some to the water.
I'm missing here, so.
Counselor Arnold.
Just a quick question, why is, there's a connection or like a fee that everybody has prior to using any water at all and the homes are different than like the trailer parks?
So, there is some state law on trailer parks.
Oh, okay.
So, if you'll, you'll notice that on water and sewer, so.
It's just a little.
It's one of them things, yeah.
Okay. Well, there you go. Look, answers like that.
Good question. Okay. Counselor Arnold.
I've moved to approve Resolution 2022-14, stated within the packet.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion?
I have a question.
Resolution.
You called it drought rate. And I, I don't know, that term kind of bothered me a little bit. And, you know, they said water rates during the drought declaration is a term that you used in the packet, but drought rates, I don't know, is that, are we using that formally as a?
So, on our, on our information, we call it the drought conservation water rate. So, it's to do two things. It's not, it's not solely to raise money, it's also to increase conservation.
Okay, so are we using that full title? I think that's a little bit more explanatory to say that in the newsletter or not rather than drought rates.
Yeah, we will use the title that's on your sheet in there is what I would think we'd use, unless you want to use something different.
Okay. As part of this resolution, Cody had it up there just a minute ago, how I put it into the fee schedule was water rate during drought declaration, just because I felt that was a little simpler for them to understand, yeah. So, that's how I drafted it up, but it's, again, it's only in place if a drought has been declared, so.
I find some negative connotations to drought rate as opposed to the term for conservation. Anyway, hopefully, as a person who is somewhat of a wordsmith, I think that needs to be stated in its entirety as you put it.
We'll note that.
Okay. Counselor Hilton, did you have something? Okay, Counsel Arnold.
Just one quick question, have you, have you declared a drought?
Well.
It says in the thing, it says the mayor will declare.
Right, he's done it verbally, but we need to officially put it in writing. I have one that's ready to go, right.
We're pushing the drought conservation verbiage of wordsmith.
No, I had it prepared a couple of weeks ago, but there were some other things I wanted Sean to look at, but it was almost an overreach. Basically, what I did is I took Ogden Cities that they had last year because that was really good, they threw in some other things, but we hadn't discussed those things, so I got to go back to the original and then we'll have him, it'll be signed. I've got it on my desk, so.
So, do we need a pending on this pending a drought?
No, it'll be fine.
We're not proposing this until July 1st and we would have that signed.
That's why I've been in a real big hurry and it's strictly a declaration made by the mayor. Mayor has that authority to declare.
And it's in the resolution, you know, when the mayor has, so I think we're okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second on this resolution. Ms. Mayor, going, will you pull the council?
Counselor Arnold? Aye. Counselor Hanson?
Aye.
Counselor Hilton? Aye. Counselor Stevens? Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously, very good. Yeah, I might as well stay there for a second.
I would like to say really, I know we're throwing money at you guys like crazy this year and like, we hate to do this, I just, I know you're in a tough spot, so thank you.
Man, yeah, not enough newsletters coming out. Yeah.
Sunset. The old man.
That's the new corner.
All right, we'll move on to number three, consideration of ordinance number 950, implementing fees for violations of water restrictions. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. So, again, this one's a little different because this one will be self-imposed. We are, we're actively taking out letters right now, door-to-door on violations, whether it's something we see while we're driving around, whether it's a complaint. We are not actively digging through history, like we're not going through people's accounts and looking for violations on accounts at this time. But if we get a call, if we see a violation of what our water restrictions are, we're taking a notice out, we're trying to do it door-to-door, face-to-face. If that doesn't work, a phone call, if that doesn't work, the worst case is leaving it on a door, which is not the best case for sure, but it might come down to that. And then we're just looking for something to help us back it up with people that don't want to follow through. So far, we're not there yet and hopefully we don't get there, but this was a way we thought could actually maybe have people pay a little bit more response to what we're trying to do, so. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
I appreciate the tone of it. I think you guys have the right idea. I mean, there's been a few nights where I've been laying there thinking, is my sprinkler system flipped off? Because I've been messing with it, you know, fixing stuff and I don't want it to suddenly go and have my neighbors, you know, coming out with the pitchforks because you got to, you got to remember, a lot of the people.
I'm sending somebody else to your house if it's your mother.
I know, I'm probably the closest watched person out there, but.
Mayor, I did have a question.
Yeah. Counselor Hanson, sure.
So, under that ordinance, there, although the fees are going to be applied administratively to utility accounts, there is the Class B misdemeanor. Is there a circumstance where that would apply and would that have to be a police officer or code enforcement that?
It would have to be either a police officer or code enforcement to do it and that, they could both apply. You have your civil penalties and that's why you'll notice in eight dash one dash sixteen. I put that sentence in there just to put people on notice that there's additional penalties here, so you could get both. One's a civil infraction, one's a criminal. So it, they could get both. I don't know that we've ever exercised the criminal one, not very much since I've been here.
A couple of times, but it's, it's very rare. I mean, our whole goal is education and, and getting people just to cooperate. I mean, if you think about it, Riverdale's pretty dang good. I mean, you even look at what we did last year, we didn't even get too strict about it and we asked people. We, we noticed the water drop. We know April this year, I'm talking twenty-five to thirty acre feet. That's one acre, one foot deep of water, thirty times over that we saved just in April. If you think about that, that's pretty substantial for a month that we typically only use a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty acre feet in April. So it'll be down around a hundred. I mean, that's a big deal. And I've had numerous people, I had a lady and a gentleman call me today that says, we just bought brand new sprinklers. And they're not either a rotor or a pop-up. How do we know how much we can water? We don't want to be overwatering. Can you help us? So we worked through it, figured out how many gallons per hour they put out and we figured out a rate for them in there. I mean, we have people that are that concerned. I don't see it as being a huge deal, but we also have a few people that probably don't care and that's the ones we just want some help with, so.
And, and that's where we would probably impose the criminal penalties if somebody who's a persistent, serious violator, then we would probably look at that. But ideally, we just go through the civil things and it doesn't tie everything up, so. If, if you look at that and it's kind of confusing where we've, what's in your packet, you have eight dash one dash twelve. And then eight dash one dash uh, sixteen, but on your code book, you got thirteen, fourteen and fifteen in between those two. So those would actually be spread out. It's just they're not here, they're just both penalty sections and they happen to be together because that's what we're dealing with, so. In the code book, it looks different.
Okay, any other questions? Counsel Arnold?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's four in favor and one opposed.
Thank you.
Yep, that passes. Ms. Maragoni, I'll just leave it up to you to ever ask if you didn't see who voted how, okay? All right. Well, now move on to item number four. Uh, discussion and consideration regarding the truth in taxation process. Mr. Brooks and Mr. Carden.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, this is just a follow-up to our last meeting. Um, where we talked about this to say, in some detail, we wanted to pursue it further and throw out more numbers and different things. So Cody's prepared to do that and if you have any questions, uh, we can deal with those at that time. But again, it's just this next step. We just need more direction on where to go at this point. So after tonight, we'd have a pretty good idea and we'll start setting things up, so, if and when you decide to do it, so.
Okay, and so if you have any questions, as always, interrupt me. So we included most of the things from two weeks ago in the packet. Um, as you can see, there's our historic water rates, most residents only pay about a hundred and forty-five dollars. Or about nine percent of their total property tax assessment goes to Riverdale City. The rest of it goes to various other entities. We talked about the home values in Riverdale and how the property tax rate actually drops. Cause it's guaranteed an amount, not um, a rate. We talked about this chart, if you remember, and one thing to add here is I wouldn't, the rates here probably aren't going to be exact. Cause they're based upon twenty twenty-one. Um, however, these dollar amounts should be fairly close. And, and like Mr. Brooks talked about, we're really just trying to get some direction here on what you'd like to do and how you'd like us to move forward. So last time we talked kind of about being in this category, this is about thirteen dollars a month and it would make our rate go up. Um, not a hundred percent, but closer around there. You can see what. Yeah, I sure will.
Just, just in the question and conversation that we were having, the property taxes for Riverdale was at a hundred thousand, which we're at, right? Is a dollar seventy-eight?
Per, let's see, hold on, help me understand, the hundred thousand?
Down on the bottom as you're.
Right here?
Sorry, can I interrupt for a second? I don't know if the YouTube picks up the voices if your mics are off.
Oh, yeah.
Most of our mics are off.
Yeah, let's make sure our mics are on, oh, yeah.
People are gonna wanna see.
Hello?
Sorry.
How many's on YouTube? Cody's not even there, what are we doing?
I'm not.
So, so right there, um, with our rate, we're at a hundred thousand, right? So it's a dollar seventy-eight?
So that would be a hundred thousand additional.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so a hundred thousand dollars additional.
The rate that we, or the amount that we bring in is about a hundred thousand?
It would, no, it's seven hundred and forty-seven thousand is what it was for tax share twenty twenty-one. Is approximately what it is. That's what this, they tell us we'll collect.
That's where we get, if we get a hundred percent increase on the Riverdale portion, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand, that'd be the thirteen thirty-seven.
Correct. So this would be additional. So you can see our current rate right now, uh, last year was this point zero 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 eight four eight. So that's how to get a hundred thousand would ha- ha- if everything stayed the same as twenty twenty-one, we'd go to the point zero 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 nine six one.
I, I was just looking for a way to explain it, cause when we were talking about, somebody saying, well, it's gonna go up nine percent. It's not nine percent of nine percent, it's, would be a hundred percent of nine percent.
Right.
But the amount that we're talking about would be thirteen thirty-seven for roughly that amount.
Right. And a lot of it's gonna come back to what the tax, what the, how the county values everybody's homes. Cause depending on the increase, the, the council decides, maybe it'll be zero. But regardless, like the rate's probably gonna drop, cause home value's more than likely gonna go up, right? And so if, like if we increase, say we decided that you wanted an extra hundred thousand dollars of money. My guess is the rate for the residents would still drop over the prior year.
I think the rate, like, I've, I've been dealing with the rate for a long time and I, I really don't care about the rate. When we talk to the people, when they come to us.
Right.
What we need to be able to explain is that the Riverdale percentage of the property tax, dollar-wise, is X.
Right.
Cause we, we start talking about truth and taxation and the rate and all that kind of stuff, it's.
It gets crazy.
Nobody, no.
Nobody understands it. Yep, yep, it geeks out real fast. So, so that's where on this, this is the most beneficial part, probably is these last three lines. So, you know, like keep in mind right now, they're paying about a hundred and forty dollars a month or to the city. And so, you know, like here's the estimated increase and then that's what the monthly increase is. The rates and that kind of don't matter. Um, just, let's go down here, just a little bit more. We talked about trends, if you remember, and what other cities are doing, when they lasted their increases. Um, so truth and taxation, just cover a couple of things about that, so you kind of know. I've been talking to the state and other entities and I still need to do that a little bit more. But like we talked about, honor before June twenty-second, an entity, a municipality has to decide if you're doing a proposed tax increase. The earlier the better, because the county and the state likes to know. But we decide that we want to do that. And so we do that and we adopt a tax rate and a budget. So say that we say, okay, we want one point five million dollars at, at that, at our second meeting in June. That's the max we can ask for at that point. Then we, the county auditor, if there's two or more entities in the county going through truth and taxation, then the county actually publishes this notice. And it has to be done honor before July twenty-second.
Can, can you just say that part about the one point five million? It's whatever we decide is the max, is that what you're saying?
Max, yeah.
We can decide whatever we want.
Right, so we could say, hey, like the max we want's ten million dollars, that's the max we can ask for. Once that meeting, like once June twenty-second comes and that meeting's over, whatever we say we want, that's the max we can ask for. We can't like do our calculations, say, oops, we were off a little bit, give me another twenty-five thousand or give me another dollar. Like, that's the max at that point, whatever we decide on that meeting. So then the county publishes this notice and it has to go out at least two weeks prior to the hearing. Now, more than likely, because Ogden City, I don't know if you've seen in KSL, they're proposing a, a tax increase. South Ogden historically has raised their property tax is every year. And I know of several others that are anticipating that they'll increase. So more than likely, the county will do that for us. So that we don't pay anything for it, that's the county's responsibility to do that notice. So then, um, you can see that gets us down here. So then we also are required to um, publish a notice. So if two or more do it, we can ignore this box because they're doing it. So then we would publish the same notice a week before our hearing. And we just have to have this process done by September first. So basically, we have to do it before the end of August. So, so more than likely, what it would look like is sometime eh, by June's, what's our meeting, the twenty-first, right? So by June twenty-fourth first, you guys would make a decision what we're doing. Then i- if there's two or more entities in the county by Jul- by July twenty-second, the county's gonna send out a notice. I'll show you what that notice kind of looks like here in a minute. Then we, a week before our meeting, we would ho- send out another notice. So more than likely at the second meeting in August, we would then have another meeting and we'd start talking. You would decide what you wanted to do. So say we said, okay, on June twenty-second or June twenty-first, we want one point five million. Then we look at everything over the summer and you're like, ah, just kidding, we don't want to raise the rate that much. We can drop the rate to anything we want. And I even asked the state, I'm like, well, what if we decide, just kidding, we don't want to do it? And they said, that's fine, at that point, we'd probably just end the truth and taxation process. And so we can go down from there, we just can't go up. And historically, I know that's what South Ogden's done a lot, is at their meeting in June, they'll say, okay, we want this amount. And then sometimes they've changed it just a little bit, depending on what they decide to do. But that's kind of what it looks like. And then what we do, cause we've had this question internally and by state law. Whatever our tentative, our last tentative adopted budget was. Or the prior year's last amended budget, that's what we would operate under for that couple month period. Cause if you think about it, we're almost operating without a budget until this final hearing. And so that's why it says up here that we would have you guys adopt like a budget to go with it. Cause we'd probably almost like adapt a second tentative budget with the changes that we're proposing. So that we'd have that budget in place. So then those notices, any questions? That's kind of confusing. This is what those notices look like. So this is an example for Twilla. You have, there's several things that have to go in it. You have to have special font size and you have to have a border, all sorts of stuff. But you basically say, okay, you know, like this is what the average resident is, this is what they pay. Um, this is what the increase is gonna be. Um, and this is kind of the percentage and stuff. So this is basically what the notice would be, this is all defined in, in state statute, what we have to do. And so it would be really similar to that. Yeah. And there's requirements on that too, like you're supposed to send it to the paper. If there's not a paper and this is all in the packet, like if you don't have a newspaper that's published at least once a week, then there's other things you can do. But, but yeah, it would go on the paper, so, and it'd be a pretty expensive ad. And so then what we would do is then come that final meeting in August, we'd hold another public hearing. And you guys would ultimately decide, okay, this is the tax rate or this is the amount of money we're requesting from the, the county. And then we'd have an adopted property tax rate. So.
Counsel Arnold.
So on this, um, with this one, if you could scroll down just a little bit and.
Scroll like back this way?
Yeah, so when you do this, okay, no, go back up, that, that's the, the last bullet point was my question. So it's, you gotta do it in all of those following, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And so there'd be a lot of like, we gotta make sure we do it just right. But that's basically like the process it would be. And, and so what some entities have done is they've said, we're gonna go through truth and taxation every year. And then they just decide if they're really gonna do a property tax increase or not. That's kind of the route that South Ogden's taken. And what they've been doing is they've just been holding the rate every year. So then they just say, okay, we're gonna go through truth and taxation and we're anticipating we're holding the rate. And so then whatever the money is associated with holding the rate, then that's what they then budget accordingly. So. Um, any questions so far?
I, I did have one. Uh, so I, I had expressed this to Cody before, I'm gonna be gone the first week of August. And so you still feel like we can, like I want to be here for all the, the truth and taxation.
And I, I haven't talked to the county specifically about when they'll send out the notice. It's my understanding they usually try to send it out around that July twenty-second. So, and we have to give two weeks' notice. So more than likely, it will have to be that second meeting in August. To just like hit all the deadlines just right. And so that would kind of be the anticipated, our intention. So. Any other questions? Okay. And then, um, so we put this together too. Um, you know, after last week, looking, um, and talking to the mayor, we kind of went through this. This is potentially what, like if we decided that we wanted a one point five million. If we wanted to have our, our property tax rate go up a hundred percent, this is what it could fund. So that'd be about three firemen, um, and an emergency management position, as Chief Sholly talked about. And then two new policemen and then doing a little different thing with our code enforcement officer. If you keep in mind, like, so this two hundred and ten thousand for police, as we got looking at it, like, to get a new policeman. Like, two hundred and ten's just an average. Scott and I both calculated it and it can be anywhere from like two hundred. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars to hire somebody, cause you know, like we don't have a car for them, we don't have guns for them, we don't have uniforms for them. We don't have radios, we don't have body cameras, we don't have in-car cameras, we don't have Office three sixty-five subscriptions. We don't have like a lot of things, so, and some of those are annual expenses, some of them are, you know, like five-year expenditures. And so even though this totals eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, we felt like we could probably do most of this stuff. With a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase and then we'd just have to start like lining stuff off if we were doing less, which is fine. Um, that's just kind of what we had talked about two weeks ago and so this is kind of what we put together as could fit in there. Um, on that note, I put together this Excel chart. We didn't send this out in your packet, hopefully you can see this. If I need to make it bigger, let me know. Um, this is kind of interesting information, at least I think it is, but I'm kind of like a numbers geek. So you can see in two thousand and sevens, the last year that we had a significant property tax increase. You can see this as our property tax revenue at that point in time. This was our police annual expenditures at that time, this was our fire. So you can see our total public safety expenditures were about two point nine million, so we're in the hole about two point five million. Um, one thing I think is kind of interesting to look at is looking in two thousand and seven dollars. A hundred dollars at that point, it would take a hundred and thirty-nine dollars today to pay for the same amount of stuff. As in two thousand and seven. And then you can see here's some annual inflation amounts. And Steve wanted me to include another entity in here, so I included Far West and I'll talk about that here in just a second. So you can see as our fire and police expenses have, have went up significantly. You can see our fires are actually almost doubled in that time period. Our police hasn't gone up that much or that higher percentage. Um, you can see we're actually losing ground, so even though we're collecting more in sales tax. That property tax is actually making up less and less. And like I've told you before, Gatsby, which is the governmental accounting standards board, one of their budgeting best practices is that. Your property tax revenue covers your public safety expenditures, just because they're annual expenditures. You can see there's no way that that's probably ever gonna happen here. And you know, if you think about it, the reason that we have as many officers, like talking about police, we're really comparable to Pleasant View. And I might be off a tiny bit, but I think they have about like ten or eleven officers. We have more than that and uh, a large part of that reason is because of the people who come here, right? During the day, the population boom that we have during those hours. And so the people who are here spending money and paying sales tax, like they're, they're funding their portion for sure. Um, but um, we may or may not be on the other end. And you can see, the reason I included Far West, you can see they use Weber County Sheriff's Office for theirs. And you can see what their sheriff's office assessment has done over that same period of time. So, so like our police, even though they've increased, like percentage-wise, they've increased a lot less than what Far West has. And um, I got their number for next year and it's seven hundred and five thousand. So you can see over that period of time, their police has almost tripled in amount. So you can see that, like, I think that kind of helps illustrate the need there. We've lost in effect a big chunk of some of that purchasing power.
How did your Gatsby, was it Gatsby?
Gatsby, governmental accounting standards board, so G A S P.
How does somebody like West Haven, who goes around saying that they don't have property tax, get through with something like that?
Well, so it's just a best practice, right? So it's not like you have to do it, it's just this is what they recommend. And the reason they recommend it is because there's some stuff, like if we shut down, so say like Riverdale was like, okay, we're done. More than likely, you're still gonna have to pay for public safety, right? Like the county would just absorb it or whoever would just absorb it. And so that expenditure would still be there, where other expenditures in the city would go away. And so they're saying like, that expenditure is very important and is gonna be there regardless. So you should use your highest and best funding mechanism to fund it. And where property taxes are basically guaranteed, that's why it's their recommendation.
Couple weeks ago, when we were doing the, when we stayed late, when we were talking. People who contract or municipalities that contract with the county for fire, that it's paid for in a.
Nobody contracts with the county for fire. So there's a separate entity. There's like Weber Fire District.
The Fire District.
Our North.
If you contract with the Fire District, it's paid for with an assessment on property tax.
Right.
And I asked about how, if you contract with the county for, for public safety, meaning sheriffs. And, and you made, you gave an answer that, um, I don't know if you remember the answer, but I, I made, I didn't feel comfortable about it. So I made some calls on it. And they actually write a check to the county for that.
Right.
It's not assessed, it's not, or in, in.
Yep. Far West pays the sheriff's office four times a year for that amount, and it's based 50%. Based upon population, 50% on calls. They're trying to change it to 70, 30. Yep.
And it's, they actually write a check, which was.
Yep.
Kind of, which was not what was stated a couple of weeks ago.
That's what I said. I'm sure I might, you might not understood, but I'm very familiar with that process.
I knew what I heard.
So, but the county does not do sheriff, or does not do fire. It's a totally separate legal entity.
I get it. Because they have, they are taxing authority.
Right.
Which is a total entity. I bet it's still, you're contracting as a municipality, you're contracting for fire. And a lot of these, the contract for fire, contract for, um, safety, uh, for, for the police or sheriffs. Whether you contract wherever. Okay. But anyway, I just wanted to, because the answer you gave, and I, and I clipped it out and.
Okay. Well, yeah, I know that I said that we, they pay for it, because that's how it works. They pay quarterly. It's based upon that assessment. Right. It's based upon an assessment from the sheriff's office, based upon a calculation. And that's how it's done.
It's not an assessment of taxes.
No, it's not. Nope.
And maybe, maybe I misunderstood your wordplay on, on.
Cause it's an assessment of a fee from the sheriff's office.
It is contracted.
It is a contract. Correct. So, so anyways, that's part of the need. That's the process. I don't know if you have any questions. We're just really looking for some direction. Do you want to hire a few new public safety people? Like we talked about, everything's going up. More than likely, we're going to have to do this for 2032. So in some ways, and there's some definite needs. Like if you ask Chief Sholly, and if you ask, um, Scott, like your Chief Brinkman, like they have some needs within their department. And, and they would welcome some of these additional staff to help with, you know, the workload and those kinds of things. Um, and, and I think it's good for all of us to familiarize ourselves with the process and those kinds of things. So we just really kind of need to know what you would like to do and the direction you'd head. Cause if we're going to do that, then I need to make some changes to the budget for our June 21st meeting. And, and you know, like where stuff's going to go and those kinds of things, based upon this schedule that we showed you that was included in the packet.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, I know there were, we talked about it in our strategic planning. We had the reports from police and fire and. And it was compelling to know that there's times where there may only be one officer on duty at the city. Or that we have one guy on a fire truck by himself, because the other two had to go with an ambulance. And, and that's pretty compelling. Um, although we know that we get great reciprocal support from all the surrounding communities and our guys aren't really alone. Um, it would be nice if they pull up to a fire and, and actually go in the building. Um, right away, rather than having to wait. Um, and same with police, so they can respond to. You know, enact the shooting and the stabbing at the same time and, and know that our citizens are being taken care of. And, and that is very compelling. And I appreciate, um. I appreciate how hard especially police has, has worked to keep a tight budget. Cause it's hard with public safety. You have to keep up. You have to keep up with the training requirements that are out of your control. And we are competing in fire and police with other communities. We have to be able to have people and knowing that we have retirements coming up and growth in the city. And we're already, we've maybe pushed the limits on, on being efficient as much as we can. It seems like an important time to really consider this. Um, and as a side note, I just want to be sure, although we've talked about putting it to the public as this is for public safety. The council is 100% supportive of all the departments in the city. And the work and the time that they've put in to keep our budgets. Good, efficient and tight, and the extra time and effort they've put in. And knowing that by doing a property tax increase, if we do that. That hopefully that takes the stress off the general fund budget for these other departments, that we're not just, you know, helping out public safety. But hopefully in a roundabout way, all of the staff to take some of the burden that they've been feeling in their positions. I just wanted to make sure all of that was presented to everybody and clear.
Thank you, Councilor Hanson.
Mayor, if I could say something, because I was going to follow up with exactly that, is that the city administrator, having been in this position. I mean, full-time this year, that's the concern I have. I, I hear all these departments are coming to me and asking for help. We threw that example up there just to show you how expensive this is. And so even for us to ask 750. It still doesn't even cover that. And that doesn't include anything else. And we can pull from other areas if we have some help like that, but. Um, we've gone a long time and it's, it's time we've got to do something. And so like, even though the 750 didn't cover it, we thought it was at least a good start for us. But as you can see by that example there, that doesn't even cover, and those were all code or public safety related type, type things with code enforcement and our emergency operations person. So again, that doesn't pick up anything else. But like Annie said, we can pull it from other areas if we can take some of that burden off there. Hopefully that's the plan. But there will be a lot of, a lot of things, but this would certainly help us drastically. But even the 750 is lower than, than what that's projected. So it's a tough call.
Senator Stevens. You know, uh. Excuse me. R C Willis is closing. They, they have about $55 million in, in, uh, sales a year. And using my four-function calculator. Uh, that's, that's a loss of about 800,000. That we're going to lose, and it's not being replaced. So, you know, this is, the timing on this is crucial.
Um, and, and I think educating the public, um, I wrote a Facebook post this last week and put it out. Um, I spent a lot of time on my newsletter article, um, trying to get the wording just right for this next one. And just, just trying to make sure that it's, it's all, and, and there will be a big focus on public safety. But it, it is what Mr. Brooks and Annie said also, or Councilor Hanson. It's gonna, it's gonna help take a little bit of pressure off the entire city, like if we can get that. But I did have one request and, uh. You know, I, I'm really glad this, the council's all unanimous on this and we're all standing together, but I think we're still going to take a pretty bad beating. And, and I, I would really ask if there was a way we could keep the increase under a hundred percent. I, I think that might just help us a little bit. I think if it's over a hundred percent, it might just be too much for people to, to stomach. I don't know. That's just a personal thought of mine. Um. 90% sounds better to me than 125% increase. Um, they're both horrible. And I, I, I don't, you know. I'm not thrilled that we have to do either one of them, but something has to be done. But it just, if there's any way to keep that under a hundred, I think it would. It, it wouldn't be a complete doubling of the rate, you know? I don't know. That's just a thought. I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilor Stevens.
I, I'm of the opinion that, hey, everything's going up, you know? It doesn't really, it's, I think people are desensitized. Yeah, they're mad at everything. What's, what's different about this? One more thing that was brought up in the presentations a couple of weeks ago was. The young people that we typically would hire for recreation and for public works. As part-time, for seasonal, um. And I heard this, you know, kids don't, you know, young people don't want to work. I, I just don't think they want to work for what we're able to pay, because they can make more somewhere else. And so to be competitive and get the help we need, we're going to have to pay now. I don't know. Can you, I don't know if we have tiers and, you know, this is, uh, uh, you know, an HR issue as to. How do you pay a part-timer when you need, you know, like Sean needs help during the summer? Rich needs help with, with his program. So, you know, the pay is, is. We're competing against, I never thought I'd say this, we're competing against McDonald's, against Chick-fil-A, against all these places. That are paying some pretty, pretty impressive wages. I, I don't know how they're doing it, but anyway, they're doing it. And that's who we're competing against. And if we want to get that, those manpower that we need, we're going to have to start paying.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, so you're just looking for some guidance on, on where to head with this?
And, and we really need some direction on a number too. That's kind of a big deal. We, we've got to know where we're at, what you guys think would be appropriate.
How, how is that presented? Is it presented as a percentage or dollar amount?
So usually we would request an amount, and then the rate would be based upon that amount. The one thing, I was talking to the mayor about this before the meeting, so like this. Um, we talked about this last week, but here or two weeks ago, this is from the, um, state's tax. Property Tax Certified Tax Rate website. And so you can see like last year, we got $47,000 worth of property tax from new growth. That was allocated. I talked to the state about that. And I was like, well, is there a way to still get our new growth on top of that? On whatever number we choose. And there's really not. And so like, if we say we want 1.5 million. Then the rate will adjust based upon that new growth. But I have no way of estimating what the new growth is until the county does all their magic and. And calculates it. So it's, it's not like we can say, hey, we can do 1.5 and it's going to be 90%. There's no way. Um, so you'll just have to kind of decide what you, you guys would like to do. And then we can figure it out from there, if that makes sense. So if you want 90%, uh, last year, that amount was the 747,999. So we can times that by 90% and add it to it. We can do whatever you'd like. So.
We have a month to.
We have a month to decide. It would be nice probably tonight if you could say, yeah, we're going to do it. Even if you wanted to think about like the amount, just so that we could let the county and the state know, are you okay with that? Just so that they, you know, like, hey, more than likely, we're going to do it. We're going to do truth and taxation, just so that they could put us on their schedules and kind of know. Plan accordingly. But if you want to think about an amount, that's fine. The only thing is, at some point, I, I have to know so that I can start like adding it to the budget. But we don't have to know tonight. So.
Councilor Arnold.
So just, just so everybody knows, um, I'm in favor of the, even the hundred percent. Um, especially supporting public safety, um, specifically, I think, you know, um. You know, I, I hope Sean agrees with me. When I go to work, I don't get shot at. You know, I'm not running into a fire or anything like that. So, um, they shouldn't be doing that alone. If, if people read the police reports that Chief Brinkman puts in our packets, I mean, they're pulling their guns more than. I mean, the, the type of calls that they're playing with, I mean, it's, I mean, I shouldn't say playing with, I guess, right? I mean, type of calls they're responding to are weird. I mean, people are getting crazy about stuff and, you know, they shouldn't be going in alone. It's like, like Steve said in the beginning of the meeting, um. You know, it's something you don't want to be a part of, a witness to, and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, I'm really supporting this. And I am up for election or reelection in 18 months or whatever. And I would gladly sit down with people and talk about it. So if they want to retaliate, that's fine. I mean, I. I think it's something we need to do. We haven't done anything since 2007. So that's. Sometimes you got to take the pain and worry about your part-time career or whatever. So. Anyway, anybody else? I, I would, I don't know if we have a motion consensus?
I think, Mayor, maybe we could, we could look at it in two parts. Just if we had a consensus that, yeah, you're, you plan on doing this would be the first thing. Um, but if we want to wait on the consensus on an amount, that's fine too. But we, we certainly need that part of it. So.
Okay. Do we have a consensus to do it, to do it? I think everybody is in favor. That's, uh, unanimous. Everybody is giving consensus to do that. So we'll move forward with that.
Can I, can I just throw out? I, I, I would be, I have no problem saying 800 to 900,000 increase. I have no problem with that. Just needs to stay under a million, because that, there's a threshold there that has a different connotation.
Yeah. When you bring it, can they put together maybe a chart of the different things we've talked about, of the different levels and what that percentage wise would be of an increase?
Why? Okay. So like more than this, like what, what levels do you want?
Too much, like just real simple, like 800,000 equals this much percent increase. 750 equals this much. You know, just something simple.
Yeah, we can.
Bottom line's kind of captured a little bit though.
Right.
You know, just so it's easier to vote on, I guess.
Okay. So do you want like, if I do like seven, eight, nine million, does that give you like what you need? Do you want like seven, 750, eight, 850, nine, like just so that I don't miss something? It doesn't matter. I mean, once I throw one of them together, it's easy.
Yeah, I'm fine with anything. I just thought it would make it easier for us to all see at the same time and be able to vote easier next time.
And that's fine.
To be able to communicate it to people that called, drive by the house, you know, whatever. I mean, we just need to be able to communicate it. Because once again, if you start using percentages, it gets convoluted. You, you look actual dollar amounts and what it's going for. Then I think you can sell it somewhat. You're, they're not going to be happy for sure. I'm not happy. It's affecting me. Is it affecting all of you? Clark, is it affecting you?
Actually, no.
I know. You, you should actually declare your.
I'm not affected. I'm, I'm a disabled American war veteran with a service-related disability. So I have that waived as a.
Okay.
And just to that point, you can see the notice is largely driven at that. Like it doesn't include percentages. It just includes amounts.
It does have one percentage though.
Yeah, yeah, it does. But for the most part, it is just amounts.
I feel like the percentage is going to be the hardest thing for people to take. I think the actual dollar amount. You know, nobody wants to pay an extra 12 to 15 dollars a month. I mean, we don't just have it laying around. But that's a little bit easier to stomach than somebody says your, your taxes are going up a hundred percent and you, you, you've, you know, you freak out.
I was thinking the chart just for us for.
Yeah, yeah. Where, where you're like, okay, that's one last trip to, you know, to the fast food place or two, two trips maybe or whatever. But, uh. Yeah. Dollar amounts are way easier in this case than the percentage. I, I think the percentage is what's going to cause us the most stress through the whole thing. Um, is when people see the percentages. The newspaper is going to have a heyday with it. And that, that's just the way it is. So if we can stick to numbers, I think it's going to be better.
And we will, like, until the county does their final assessments or releases them in the certified property tax website, which is usually around like June 8th or 9th. Um, then that's when I know what like the assessed value would be and what the rates would be and some of that, that I could get you more. Concrete numbers. I can, you know, like give you what I've given you and tweak it and add more. But until we really have the numbers from the county, we won't have like concrete numbers.
Let me ask you one more question, and, and this is getting kind of in the weeds. But when the county looks at it, are they going to look at our last one, the point 0008? Or are they going to say, okay, well, you would drop down to point 0007 this year? Uh, because it might be a moot point discussing about percentages, because we're going to be way over a hundred percent if they go with like our new rate. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah. So what, so this is actually like a screenshot just from the website where I set our property tax rate. So it'd look really similar to this, except for the, the numbers would be adjusted. So they, they would calculate, okay, this is what your certified tax rate would be. This is your growth. So then this is the auditor certified tax rate, and this is the auditor certified rate revenue. And then I'd come in here and punch in what we wanted budgeted revenue wise. And then it would calculate like what that rate would be.
So our new certified tax rate will be on there and it could be point 006 something or.
Right.
Right? And that's going to, the, the percent increase will, that the newspaper's going to pick up is going to be based on that.
And the newspaper could choose either really, because they could choose like that rate versus what our rate could be. They could choose how much you guys paid last year versus what you're going to pay next year. I mean, I don't. I mean, I don't know. I mean, there's so many variables with property tax that they could choose a lot of different things and spin it however they want it. We're just going to have to try and provide us clear information.
You need to know that our, on the residents that are going to bear this thing are, I mean, what we look like to the state, right?
Right.
I mean, so in the future, when they look at us and they say, well, you've had this help in the past, but we're not going to give you any help in the sales tax, because everything else is cheaper in the property tax. We've got to, I mean, there's, there's some ways that, hopefully, if, I don't know if whoever the paper is, calls, calls you or something like that, I mean, you can spin that in several different ways, even put it on Facebook, so they can draw from that. Because it's, I mean, there's more people looking than just the individual taxpayer, which, you know, we are one of each one of them. So.
For sure.
And and to that point, as the discussion went on Facebook, there were a couple of residents that do understand that the 210s and the 2030, I was very impressed. That the message might be getting out a little bit, and that's what we want, is for them to understand we have a problem coming up, you know? So that's a good point, yeah.
And it should honestly, hopefully, help us with, like, Ramp and everybody, because it's like, we're no different than any other city. Like, we've got to do property tax increases, too. And and hopefully, next time, like, we need something from Ramp, it's a little easier sell, too. Because it's like, hey, we're really the same as South Ogden. We raise our property taxes. Or Washington Terrace. I think they get all the money, right?
I I will tell you, I have a dinner every month with the mayors, and when they found out we were raising our taxes, they were kind of like, whoa, you know, it it was a shock to them. And so we're trying to get the message out that, hey, Riverdale doesn't have all this money. We're, you know, it's all about changing the the narrative a little bit. So we just got to get the state to understand that, too. Yeah. We don't usually have public comments during this time.
Just real quick about your tax. I live, I live in Roy, and I'm a Realtor. Riverdale is actually one of the lowest tax base areas in Weaver County.
Yeah.
And you have all kinds of room to
Right. Yeah.
From, but the word I found out, I'm representing the Coleman's on the overview. And they've got another piece of property that I just listed. And I did, been doing the research on the tax analysis of all those properties. And in my research, I found that there's actually four parcels on the overview. Two parcels had, they were being double taxed by the county the day that the Coleman's have been paying for, like, 11 years, double taxation. So I I turned that into the county. We did the research on it through the survey. One of the county assessors, we found out that they had made a mistake, and I just found that out on another property there. So I see, I see all kinds of wiggle room for you guys to
Yeah.
To to bring that increase on. And then if the residents don't like it, then you could help guide them through to have their property assessed by Weaver County Assessor's Office and help them physically come out and reevaluate, reevaluate.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, that's what we're trying to do, is just get a little more in line. So thank you. Okay, so I guess we have the consensus on moving forward with the truth in taxation. And we don't need to come up with a number tonight unless people want to. If you want to hold off on that, or do, okay. We're going to hold off, but we will get that to you soon, Mr. Carden. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item number five. Consideration of adjourning into a closed executive session pursuant to provisions of Section 52-4-205 of the Open and Public Meetings Law for the purpose of discussing the purchase or sale of real property. We would need a motion to move into that closed session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? That requires a roll call vote. Ms. Marigoni.
Aye.
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 Okay. We are headed into a closed session to discuss the possible sale of some real property. So. Thank you for coming tonight.